Good evening and welcome to another edition of the Just Danny Show. This is going to be the introduction to the candidates that are going to be running against the incumbents for the election this November. We have seats one, three, and five. And of course, this will not be about the incumbents. This particular podcast again will be about the candidates running against them for seats one, three, and five. I know it's a little early, but you know how I like to hit the ground running and I want to let you know about each candidate as soon as possible. So I can condition you to to get to know them and understand them. And so you can make a really good decision come November on who you're going to be voting for. And of course, as we move along these next six months during the their campaigns, you'll get to know them even more. And I'll discuss that at the very end of the podcast, tell you what I have planned for that. But initially, this is just a basic introduction as to who they are, what seats they are running for. So let's go ahead and get started. We'll go in order. So seat one, as you know, the incumbent is mush for brains, Michael Gonzalez. But the person taking him on, her name is Allison Strange. A lot of you might know who Allison Strange is. Currently, she's the owner of the Spring Games. I talked to her the other day and initially she made a joke saying like, basically, I'm a travel agent for softball teams. So what she does is she brings softball teams into Claremont, helps them find venues in which to play their tournaments. She also helps them find accommodations such as, you know, hotels and so forth. So that's what she currently does. Some of you might be aware that previously she was an attorney. She no longer is a practicing attorney. Her, when I spoke to her about the whole attorney thing, she said in a nutshell that she left being an attorney because she felt like the judicial system was spineless. So obviously, she's well aware of corruption and what corruption looks like. So, so again, I like that because she at least is aware and can see corruption from a short distance or a far distance. So, and a lot of you also may be aware that she's extremely intelligent. And it's nice, obviously, too, to have a law background when sitting on council because you already know the Florida statute. You already, you already know this, the ordinances and stuff that that are, you know, in regards to this regard to the city and stuff. So she's, she's obviously knows what she's doing. She brings intelligence, which before Todd came on to the council real recently, we did not have. And we hadn't had for quite some time. And that's inclusive of our actual city attorney, Dan. So she would bring intelligence and integrity. Again, she left law because spineless, right? Judicial system. So she would bring integrity right out of the gate to to city council if she was to be elected. And her opponent, Michael Gonzalez, is literally brain dead. Like, he has no brains. We've seen his word salads. We've, we've heard his word salads, I should say. Real dumb as a box of rocks. And I don't want to make this about the incumbents, but I just wanted to make that comparison real quick. I feel like Allison could beat Michael pretty much doing nothing at this point. If you were vested in who's running and you understand who's running, it's, it's a, a no brainer. No pun intended, no brainer as to who to vote for for seat one. But anyway, also, those of you that know her, you know, her last name is Strange. Yes, she's been married before. So there's a divorce. Who cares? We've all been married before. So that's why there's a difference in the name. And also, while she was an attorney back in December of 2010, and again, I vet all the candidates, she had a malpractice suit brought against her. It was frivolous and really ridiculous. They claimed that she did not, she did not litigate properly. You know, I'm sorry. Okay. So they said she did not litigate properly. So I'm going to bring the case down just real quick because people are going to be able to look this stuff up. And it was no big deal. It went back and forth and back and forth. And at the end, let me get to the, okay. So it was brought against Allison Strange and Brett Jones. You all know who Brett Jones is. Back in 2010, they made a motion at the very end after a tedious back and forth with this, these people that said, well, she, you know, she didn't uphold her fiduciary, you know, what do they, what do they call it? The fiduciary duty. She didn't, she didn't do that. So which basically means that, you know, she didn't, the legal responsibility to act solely in the best interest of another party. So they felt like she failed in her fiduciary duty to to properly litigate for them. It's just really dumb. Every attorney inclusive of Jimmy Crawford has had a malfunction. Well, that too. But has had a malpractice lawsuit. Basically, if you are an attorney and you don't have at least one malpractice lawsuit against you, you probably aren't doing your job. But, but I digress. But anyway, after the back and forth, there was a motion for final summary judgment where basically they said defendants, Allison Strange individually, Brett Jones individually hereby files this motion for final summary judgment as to plaintiffs, Donald Watson and Christine Watson, undisputed facts, the matter arises as an action against Allison and Brett, and I'm not reading this verbatim, by the way, for malpractice negligence and intentional breach of fiduciary duty. The Watsons retained defendants on September 2007 to appeal on existing order enforcement, blah, 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 blah. So what they were doing is asking for a motion for final summary judgment. The parties to this matter agree that the actions of the defendants, who would be Allison and Strange, Brett Jones, as described in the amended complaint, do not constitute legal malpractice and negligence. Moreover, the parties are in agreement that defendants did not intentionally breach of any fiduciary duties owed to the plaintiffs. And then after that motion was filed, the judge granted it because the judge could see that there was nothing wrong with what they did. Problem is, is when you hire an attorney and you feel like they didn't litigate correctly, because you think you know law more than they do, you get pissy and you'll file bogus shit like this. At the end of the day, they granted the motion for final summary judgment and the judge deemed that there was no, what the actions of the defendants, again Brett Jones and Allison Strange, did not constitute, did not constitute legal malpractice or negligence, nor did it constitute an intentional breach of fiduciary duty. So there's that. In case you super sleuths out there, find that or already found that, no big deal. They, it's just they didn't like the way they litigated on their behalf. So that's it on Allison as far as vetting is concerned. Normal gal. She also was instrumental, if you remember, also two years ago in regard to the budget. You saw her go up and speak and really kind of put Bull Tyson his place. Like, why didn't you give the council a balanced budget? Why didn't you show them a balanced budget? Like, why didn't you do this? And she's very, very knowledgeable about budgets. So between her and Todd being up there together, they're going to be like a super group, like a super rock group up there knowing how to handle budgets and what goes into a budget. She's very good with numbers. She's very methodical. She was a huge, huge advocate for a balanced budget two years ago. She spoke in opposition of the millage rate increase. So she is very, very, and this is probably the most important thing to know about Ms. Allison Strange, is she is very, very fiscally, not physically, Murray. He always says physically. I'm sorry, squirrel. She is very, very fiscally conservative to the point where she's willing to do the hard things. Like, she's willing to cut this or cut that, cut the fat off shit that we don't even need. Okay. In the budget. And she actually, big props, two years ago, she actually balanced the budget, something that Baltis could not do two years ago for the entire city of Claremont. Nor again, did the council even ask him to do that, which was a failure and dereliction of duties on the council's part to not force Baltis to do, to present a balanced budget. Probably because he's, he can't. He can't or he wouldn't. Okay. But, but Ms. Allison Strange balanced the budget two years ago when Baltis couldn't even do it. And she presented it to each and every council member. A lot of you may not have known that. I think I brought it up on a podcast later on, but I'm not quite sure. But she did do that. She actually balanced the budget and gave a copy of that balanced budget to each and every council member, including the mayor. And they all still shit on the city of Claremont and raised her taxes, raised her taxes. So kudos to Ms. Allison Strange. If I had a couple of words to describe her, I would say she has a moral compass. She's absolutely fiscally conservative and she's super intelligent, super extremely intelligent. You know, she's got the law background. She's very, very good with budgets and she proved that. That she wasn't just saying shit. She actually proved it two years ago. And of course, I give her kudos for leaving law because, because of the bullshit that goes on. So I really like her as a candidate. I like her as a person. And because not only am I investigative journalist slash political pundit, I also am a taxpayer. So I have the ability to, and the right to express my opinion on who I feel is best fit for fitness of office up there. And that would be Allison Strange, hands down, in comparison to mush for brains, dumbass Michael Gonzalez. And we'll get to that, those people tomorrow night. Some interesting things in regard to the incumbents. So that's going to be an interesting show tomorrow. All right. So moving along, I told you this is going to be quick. We're going to move along to the next seat, which is seat three, which is the mayor's seat, another mush for brains, can't even speak English. Tim Murray is the incumbent. So, so who is his, who is his opponent for this upcoming November? That would be Rick Van Wagner. A lot of you have some preconceived ideas about him. I can tell you, I've never met this man personally. I've never seen him in the flesh. I've never spoken to him on the phone. I probably wouldn't even know him if I bumped into him. Now, you know, I have pulled up these people's pictures for you. So this is the first time that I've actually really was able to see him up close. Now, I did watch Jim Purvis's funeral livestreamed back in December during his celebration of life. And that's the first time I ever even actually audibly heard Mr. Rick Van Wagner speak. Okay. So I don't know this man from Adam. We've all heard lots of things about him and his church. A lot of you already know this. So this isn't even going to be a big deal for most of you. But for the new people following the page or the new people here in Claremont that are clueless, let's just go ahead and address the elephant in the room, shall we? This man has had six foreclosures. And before you spill your tea or drop your Cheetos bag on yourself on your, while you're sitting on your beanbag right now, let's kind of go over the issues as to why that happened. And this is fact. This isn't me just making excuses for somebody that I have no idea of, like, I don't know this person. Here's what happened with that. And this is fact. And you can look this up yourself. And you can look at the, the years and the dates as far as the months and the year as to when these foreclosures for Mr. Van Wagner took place. Okay. So a lot of you remember the subprime mortgage crisis. This was between the years 2007 and 2010. And if you look up his foreclosure information, you'll see it is all within that timeframe. Okay. These weren't homes that he was living in. These were like properties that he purchased. And a lot of people did this. Remember, a lot of people were buying properties and flipping them and doing whatever. And if we want to really dig deep on who this affected locally, I can tell you right now Wade Boyett, Jimmy Crawford, Angie Langley, all three of them went in together on this subprime mortgage bullshit. And they lost their asses in several foreclosures, all three of them. So if you want to look at one person and not look at the other people in this town who are prominent and also pushing another candidate, again, we'll get into that again, get into that tomorrow night. So let's just look at it fairly, shall, shall we? A lot of prominent people in this town also took a hit in regard to foreclosures, making decisions at this time, they were to, to buy homes or what properties, what have you. So basically, the American subprime mortgage crisis was a multinational financial crisis that again, occurred between 2007 and 2010, the same exact time that you'll see on his court dockets in regard to his foreclosures. Okay. The crisis led to a severe economic recession. Everyone that is of age can remember this with millions of people losing their jobs and many businesses going bankrupt. It was triggered by a large decline in US home prices after the collapse of a housing bubble leading to mortgage delinquencies, foreclosures, and the devaluation of housing related securities. Declines in residential investment preceded preceded the Great Recession and were followed by reductions in household spending and then business investment. Spending reductions were more significant in areas with a combination of high household debt and large, larger housing price declines. The housing bubble that I like to call it, preceding the crisis was financed with mortgage backed securities and collateralized debt obligation obligations, otherwise known as CDOs, which initially offered higher interest rates than government securities, along with attractive risk rate ratings from rating agencies. So while the elements of the crisis first became more visible during 2007, several major financial institutions collapsed in 2008, which was September, with significant disruption in the flow of credit to businesses and consumers and the onset of a severe global recession. So two proximate causes were the rise in, again, subprime lending and the increase in housing speculation. So this was all within that time period, easily explained away in regard to his six foreclosures, all within that timeframe, all investments that he had made. Again, he's not the only person that's prominent in this town that it happened to. And I'm just going to reiterate it again, Wade Boyett, Jimmy Crawford, and Angie Langley. And that's just off the top of my head. I'm sure there was more folks in this town that suffered the same issues. So again, we just addressed the elephant in the room. I personally don't care if you've had foreclosures that long ago for this, because of this reason. I don't think that that affects your fitness for office, especially because it was the bubble and it burst and everybody pretty much got fucked during this timeframe. I don't care. I just don't care. So that doesn't matter to me. There's other whisperings that there was some sort of MLM going on within his church, selling some healthy wine or something, making money for his church. I haven't had, again, I haven't had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Van Wagner. As I said, this is just an introduction podcast to who these people are. And you know, what I've vetted thus far, as far as criminal or financial or the stuff that I do for everybody over the years. So aside from that kind of stuff, I need to talk to him about. And I, and I have not, as we all are aware, he's a previous developer. So does he know developers in town? Sure he does. Sure he does. And that's another thing I need to talk to him about. Does he have ties or has he had ties to Lee Shira? Yes, he has. I have to be fair. I have to be honest. Okay. Do I like Tim Murray? Would I like Tim Murray the fuck out of there? Sure. Every day of the week, I'd like Tim Murray out of there. But I'm also not going to push, my, not push, but like, my own opinion wouldn't be to vote for somebody that may or may not be in bed with developers. Because you know how I feel about that. So like I said, I have to talk to these people more. I'll tell you at the end of this podcast, what my plans are to, to really get deep in their minds and have them talk and, and, and introduce themselves to you and so forth. And, and really just kind of get, kind of get under their skin, I guess, and figure them out and how they operate. And so, so there's some talk in regard to that. So I have questions for Mr. Van Wagner. Am I 100% on him? No. I'm 0% on Murray. I think at the end of the day, if what I, once I, like, again, just an introduction tonight, once I get to know these people or this particular person we're speaking about, if I feel like I can't get on board with him or whatever. I mean, at the end of the day, come November, I'll be one of those under votes. I won't, I just will skip that entire box because I can't bring myself to vote for Murray. And if I don't like what I hear, once I speak to Mr. Van Wagner, then, and I feel like I can't vote for him either, I won't vote for either one of them. I'll just leave it up to God himself to go ahead and let the chips fall where they may. So at this point in the game, that is 100% fact. Yes, he has six foreclosures. I explained why those foreclosures happened. In my personal opinion, I don't really care about that. The whole wine MLM thing, I think is kind of fucking hilarious. I kind of do. It's just like if you're, you know, I mean, cops sell their own coffee nowadays, right? They sell their own coffee. And, you know, church, they sell, you know, they, they, they have church fundraisers and so forth. So in my personal opinion, and again, I don't know diddly squat, other than just a blurb that I heard about some MLM thing going on within the church to sell healthy wine. On its, on its face, it's, it sounds hilarious to me. It just sounds funny and I don't really have a problem with that. But other than that, you know, everything else has just been rumor. I don't know anything else. I really don't. I really, really don't. I would love to talk to this gentleman. He was given my number about three days ago. He's never called me. I don't know why. But if he's listening, I would really appreciate a phone call. I think a lot of these candidates coming out of the gate because, and he has, oh, and this is very important. I can't believe I almost forgot to tell you this. He actually, for those of you that are new here, he actually did sit on council years ago. He was a council member previously years ago. And then he decided in the following race thereafter to run for mayor. And we all remember Gail Ash, the smoker from New York, you know. She was insufferable. But I kind of miss her compared to, to the asshats we currently have up there. Mine is Todd Howard, of course. I kind of miss her in comparison. So anyway, but so Gail Ash ran against him and she ultimately ended up obviously winning. And he didn't, you know, he, so one sure, a sitting member of council and you run for a different seat. If you lose that seat, then you lose the seat you're currently in, right? Because somebody else is running for your seat because you're running for their seat. So he hasn't been back since as far as council. But I did want to say that, that he has sat on council previously. But for the most part, aside from one candidate, we're going to get to him next, they, they kind of seem a little relaxed about it thus far. And I get it. It's, it's a long process that we have to go. It's a six month race. I mean, they've got six months to get their shit together and start doing their thing. But we've got the incumbents already that have secretly already got their endorsements from fire and police. And again, I don't give a shit if fire and police supports you guys. I really don't. I don't give a shit about their endorsement. Because at the end of the day, you're their, kind of their boss because you run the city manager. And at the end of the day, you're the one that's going to be giving them their raises. And this is no diss on police and fire. It's not. It's not. But it's fact. They know where their raises are coming from. They know basically who to stroke to get what they want, whether it's their bright shiny toys or their raises. So of course, they're going to endorse the incumbent, especially Michelle Pines. So I don't really care. I don't care. But, but case in point is they're already doing their, one is having, you know, an event tonight to raise money. So they're already jumping on their shit to get to start. So why get there, why these, these candidates are kind of, you know, slow to move and not super fast with, you know, jumping in and kind of taking it easy this first month or something. Their incumbents are already hitting the ground running. Okay. So that kind of bothers me a little bit, but I, I'm not telling these people how to run their race, you know. I'm just not. They, they're, they're grown. They can run their own race. But in my personal opinion, I feel like they should be hitting the ground running already. Hence why I'm already doing this intro podcast. You know, I was told a couple of days ago that it, you know, it was kind of early. And maybe that's why, you know, Van Wagner hasn't called me, maybe because he's just taking a slow. I don't care. I don't care. I don't, I don't do my show based on what the candidates are doing. So either you call me before I go on a podcast or you don't. And then you get what you get and you don't throw a fit. So what I'm offering you up tonight about Van Wagner is all that I've got. Okay. It's all that I've got. So until I speak to him and then he can expand on some of these questions and concerns I have in regard to him, I can't give you folks any more than that. So there you go with that. So moving on. So that's him. And moving on to seat five, which Orca currently sits up there and that would be Michelle, I'm a liar and unhinged Pines. She currently holds that seat. And we do have an opponent and his name is Bill Peterson, William Peterson officially, but he goes by Bill Peterson. Now, who is Bill Peterson? He is the nicest man. I have spoken to him. He called me right away when somebody gave him my number. Very, very nice gentleman. He is very concerned with the expenditures of the city. So if he is to get elected along with Ms. Allison Strange, and then you've got Todd as well, who's very fiscally conservative, we are going to be running a really tight ship. We will be running is just a superior ship, really, in regard to the budget and money being spent. Because this was, you know, because I asked him, again, this is just an introduction. It's just a brief introduction to who these people are. We'll get into more on them later along the six month period here. But he is really adamant that we don't need to be spending money how we're spending money. Okay. So who, so who is he? He is 77. He lives in Kingsbridge. And I know some of you are probably going to Kingsbridge again. He's not a Jim Purvis. He's not, he's not a Jim Purvis. He doesn't have an ounce of Jim Purvis in his, in his bones. Jim Purvis was an asshole. That's right. I said what I said. Nice guy, super nice guy. He's been in the medical field all of his life. He is a, he's currently a CBS pharmacist. He also has a pilot's license. So he flies planes. Or he was flying planes. I'm not sure if he currently is, but he is a pilot. And not for like an airlines or something, but he flies planes. Super cool dude. Super cool, super nice, very laid back and very, very concerned about where the city of Claremont is going financially. But just a really nice man. Now, he, quite honestly, the, the two that I've already spoke about, he is hitting the ground running. This guy is hitting the ground running. He's got all the emails. He's going, gonna start going to where he needs to go to attend and get to know the people and do his thing. He's already raised some money. This man is, is, is tenacious as hell. Like, you can tell he's, 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 does he know all the things that going on, going on in the city right now in regard to corruption and bullshit? No, no. But he is well aware of what's important to him and the problem that's important to him. And that is our budget. That is our finances. That is our millage rate. Okay. So that's, that's him in a nutshell. Again, I can't, I can't say enough how much of a nice guy this guy is. He's pleasant. He'll be a refreshing addition to the council and get rid of Michelle Pines, very rude, power tripping, condescending attitude that she has. She's disgusting. And what kind of makes me excited about this race, folks, is the fact that, let's rewind for two years ago, when Chandra Myers was running for Michelle Pine's seat. Okay, let's rewind. Now, Michelle Pines, 100%, I put it up and you'll see, and you'll, and you'll see it again. You'll see it again. Because what do I do every, every election season? That's right. I put people's bullshit out there. And you'll see it again. Michelle raised your taxes, right? She raised your taxes, even though she told the Republican caucus that she wouldn't. She signed an oath. I called it an affidavit. I suppose it was more of an oath, that she would not raise taxes if she joined the caucus. And she lied. She signed a paper and then she lied. So I, in my opinion, feel like she will not get the Republican backing. She won't. But she did get money from Shira. Yes, she did. She got money from Shira's LLCs. She got money from Wallace, another developer. She got money from Darren and Karen Johnson. Darren's another developer. She's received money from Darren. Well, you know what? I don't want to make this about Michelle. Again, I keep kind Well, you know what? I don't want to make this about Michelle. Again, I keep kind of going off on a tangent and I apologize. That's for tomorrow night, but regardless. Um, she raised, what was it? Maybe seventy-two hundred dollars two years ago and Chandra Myers raised, I think barely three thousand dollars. Michelle is a Republican. Chandra is a Democrat and Chandra literally almost beat her. It was in, what was it? Within a hundred votes, two hundred votes? Having a brain fart. It was either one hundred or two hundred votes. Michelle narrowly, narrowly won two years ago. So I don't know why she thinks she can run again this, this election this year and think that she has a chance. Because, and I'll just say it, and I know it's nonpartisan, but y'all always ask me or you always bug the, the candidates, hey, what are you? What party are you? Even though it doesn't matter and it's nonpartisan and they actually cannot run uh, you know, stating what their party is on their signs and stuff. So we'll just go down the list real quick. Allison Strange, a registered Republican. Rick Van Wagner, a registered Republican. Bill Peterson, a registered Republican. So not so much Murray's race against Van Wagner is going to be interesting because that's a Democrat versus a Republican. So we know, we know that's not going to be very contentious as far as, oh, you know, who, who do we choose in the Republican party to go with? But let's go up to seat one. That is, this is going to be an interesting race because both of them are Republicans. Michael is Republican. Allison is a Republican. Now I always say Michael is a rhino and we'll get into more of that tomorrow. Um, so that's going to be interesting, right? Because who are the Republicans going to come out for in seat one? Who are they going to come out for? Are they going to come out for Allison and do the right thing? Or are they going to come out for Michael because based on their own corrupt, I want money bullshit and they know they can manipulate him again, just like Murray. They can manipulate these people when they're ignorant and dumb. You can't manipulate an intelligent person. You just can't. So the Republicans who are pieces of shit and they want to make their money and that's all they see is green. Well, who are they going to go for? Are they going to go for Allison Strange, the one with the moral compass who's highly intelligent and cannot be controlled? And is fiscally conservative? Or are they going to go with the yes boy? Who's an idiot because they can control him and put money in their pocket. Now I'm a registered Republican. I put that out there millions of times. Do I agree with my party? No. Do I actually hate both parties? I'm getting that way. I'm getting that way. Because people in the Republican party like Wallace and Darren and Karen Johnson, those kind of folks, Shira, they're pigs. And I can say that. Because it's my show. Um, they're pigs. They're pigs because they're only, they only care about money in their pocket. Hence why you see Darren Johnson two years ago hugging the neck of Murray and having his, his uh, watch party at CBC. Do you guys, are you guys awake yet? Do you see what's going on? So yes, that seat one, again, we'll get into it tomorrow. I keep alluding and I'm sorry. Um, seat one's going to be interesting. Two Republicans, or at least he's a registered Republican. Um, and then uh, seat, seat uh, five is going to be interesting, but not really because I already know how that's going to play out because Michelle's a Republican. I think she needs to change to Democrat. I really do. Um, and then uh, Bill Peterson is a Republican. Okay. So that's going to be interesting too, because if you're a Republican taxpayer, who are you going to vote for? They're both Republicans. Now I know she probably will not. I probably at this point can tell you with ninety-five percent certainty that she will not get the Republican backing. She won't because she lied and she raised your taxes two years ago. Republicans don't raise taxes. That's a Democrats job. Democrats tax and spend. Republicans do not raise your taxes. That's something that a Democrat does. So she pissed off the Republican party two years ago and I just don't think they're going to be there for her this year. So I think they have no other um, avenue to take but to, but to support Bill Peterson. Or who knows, they might surprise us and just stay out of the race completely, uh, which I call bullshit. They should, they should um, support Bill Peterson, but that's just my opinion. So those are the folks running and I also left out for the new folks and I apologize regarding Rick Van Wagner. He is the pastor uh, for FCC. So he's a pastor for a church. So, so there you go. And I, I left that out and I'm sorry. Um, uh, ninety-five percent of you already knew that, but for the, like I said, the newcomers might not have known. So that'll be interesting, right? For a pastor to also be the mayor. Um, so people might have a bad taste in their mouth of that too. I don't know. Um, to me personally, the mayor's seat, I'm not really concerned with. Uh, do I think Tim Murray is an idiot? A hundred percent. Do I think he needs to go? Fuck yeah. Um, but I think if we can knock Michelle out and Michael out in conjunction with Todd up there, having three up there, the next two years will be a breeze regardless of the ignoramus shit that comes out of Murray's uh, mouth and everything and everything. I'm physically conservative and uh, Claremont. Anything that comes out of his mouth for the next two years is just going to be more babbledegook that doesn't have any power to it. Because you'll have three people up there that will outvote him and quite frankly, make him look like even more moronic. So in, in a perfect world, would I want all three out? Oh, fuck yes. The fuck yes. That would be the perfect world, right? But um, I think Van Wagner can probably hold his own against Murray and um, again, let the chips fall where they may with that seat, but my main concern is getting Michelle and Michael the fuck out. Cause again, I think, I think that would be hilarious for the next two years is to continually make Murray look stupid. I mean, he does just fine on his own, making himself look stupid. But when you've got other council members up there that will just in real time make him look stupid, that fascinates me. Kind of excites me. So that's almost, that almost would be kind of fun. Um, you know, so not really worried about his race per se. Not really worried. So, so this was a quick podcast, told you it would be, and I just want to wrap it up and tell you that I have to obviously get with all three candidates and figure out because it's so hard to get three people or even two people in the same room at the same time, right? Because everybody's busy with life, jobs, kids, whatever. Um, but it is my absolute intent to have a round table with these three candidates. I'm not going to invite the incumbents because it's a waste of my breath and my email and typing to them because they will not show up anyway. So I'm not even going to bother to invite them. And basically this is about the candidates running against them. I want you to get, have an intimate setting with them. Now am I going to invite the public to come? No, this is literally going to be a livestream event only uh, between me and the three candidates. And it's not going to be about me. I'm just going to be the one filming it. It's going to be livestreamed. And I'm going to have, it's just going to be relaxed, like, kind of like a bullshit session. We're just going to be, it's going to be a very relaxed atmosphere. Um, and they're just going to be telling us about themselves and then I'll, and then I'll let them just kind of talk amongst themselves with the issues with Claremont and what, you know, and, and just, it's basically uh, like if somebody put a um, a camera um, you know, at, at your, at your, your work, you know, and just kind of like filmed you while you were interacting with your superiors at work or whatever and how you handle day to day business. It's just going to be um, like a reality show, I guess, if you will. So it's going to be very relaxed. Um, a bullshit session. And if, and I'll probably have you guys, if you want to, it's totally up to you. I'm leaving it up to you. If you want to email me questions for them that I can ask in this intimate one-on-one with each candidate, well, like not real, well, one on three, I guess. Um, feel free and I can ask them questions as well. Otherwise I'm just going to, you know, let the camera roll and let them talk about themselves. Let them talk amongst each other and then we can get an idea of how they would work together up there if all three of them were to get elected, which again, in a perfect world would be awesome, right? Cause we got what we got. And I'm just glad that, that these people didn't go unopposed or the incumbents. So while you might not think any one of them individually are like the perfect candidate, I don't think there really is a perfect candidate. Um, for any political position, to be honest with you, there, no one's a perfect candidate. Um, some are more perfect than others, but no one is like the perfect candidate. So while you might have some issues with one or two, or maybe all three of them. I don't know. It's your opinion. At least we have people that are better than what we have up there. And, and so I think this is going to be a great opportunity. Again, I have to get with them and nail, nail down a date and a time. And for those that can't watch it live, as you are aware and accustomed to, all of my stuff is archived, so you can pull it up whenever you want to and you can watch it at your own leisure. But I think it's really important to have a round table event to where you can get to know these people um, and how they react with each other and you know, just how they think. I think it's going to be a really good event. Um, again, livestream only, um, and you can just watch from the um, the comfort of your own home. So I'm really excited about that. Um, and then maybe later on I'll do a town hall and invite everybody. Highly doubt the incumbents will come because they don't, they don't want the hard questions. They don't. So um, if I do do a town hall following that, like maybe around October-ish, um, then that would be an open event for everybody to come. And I would have set it up like I did, what, four years ago where I had um, a microphone and I passed the microphone around. Remember I did it at Pizano's out there on their outside balcony or whatever the terrace? And um, passed the microphone around. And then I also had people like, you know, email me questions that I would ask off um, index cards. So we can do something like that too. Um, so those, that's the ideas that I have moving forward. But again, tonight was just an intro, just a peek into who they are and you know, the vetting process that I've already done on all of them and um, oh, and then for those of you that are interested, Bill Peterson didn't have anything but from years ago, we had some speeding tickets. So clean dude, never, you know, super nice man. Um, anyway, so with that being said, tune in tomorrow night at seven o'clock. That's going to be the real interesting show. Um, a lot of evil going on, a lot of um, people putting their dick in Claremont's Kool-Aid that it shouldn't be in, and they certainly shouldn't be using it just as a stir stick either. Um, a lot of interesting information tomorrow night coming up. So until next time, or actually tomorrow night, have a good evening. Bye bye.